So first I would like, could you call us to order please?
Yes, Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Pendero.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Here.
And Mayor Moy.
Here. And Reverend Clarence Coleman from Bethel Community Church for the invocation. Thank you sir.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you on this day to thank you Lord. Thank you for all you have done, all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you not just for what you have done, but for who you are, all-knowing, forever-present you are. We thank you Lord. But before we come to you and ask for anything, we ask for your forgiveness Father. Forgive us for our sins, create in us a clean heart, a renewed spirit. Father God, our prayer is for all over the world that you will release your spirit upon man, that every yoke be broken and every captive be set free. In the mighty name of Jesus we pray. We pray that every eye be open, that every heart be attentive to the needs of your people, and every heart to be open to receive, every ear open to hear your word. As we pray this prayer, we pray that hearts are being changed across the world, that spirits are being moved in the right direction. We pray for our leaders, we pray for our presidents, senators, representatives, governors, mayors, all, all city officials, those that protect us near and far, our first responders. We pray for our teachers, we pray for those that protect our homes, our streets, our children, our way of life. We thank you Lord. We pray that the city officials, our city officials here in this room tonight make wise decisions. Be with them Lord. We pray for the weak, the homeless, those that are shut in, those that are struggling with substance abuse, mental illness, and those that don't know you. We ask that you let your spirit rest upon each and every person in this room tonight. We pray that you bless us here tonight Lord. Be in the midst of this place. We ask that your will be done, guide and strengthen, protect your people that are called and elected to serve this community. And Lord, we
And I wanted to say, first of all, that we're a little bit late. We were in a closed session and we will be returning to the closed session to finish our business after this, this part of the meeting. So I apologize for that. So first, I would like, could you call us to order, please?
Yes. Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tonason.
Here.
Councilmember Vaccaro.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Here.
And Mayor Moy.
Here. And Reverend Clarence Coleman from Bethel Community Church for the invocation. Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you on this day to thank you, Lord. Thank you for all you have done, all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you not just for what you have done, but for who you are, all-knowing, forever-present you are. We thank you, Lord. But before we come to you and ask for anything, we ask for your forgiveness, Father. Forgive us for our sins, create in us a clean heart, a renewed spirit. Father God, our prayer is for all over the world, that you will release your spirit upon man, that every yoke be broken and every captive be set free. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. We pray that every eye be open, that every heart be attentive to the needs of your people, and every heart to be open to receive, every ear open to hear your word. As we pray this prayer, we pray that hearts are being changed across the world, that spirits are being moved in the right direction. We pray for our leaders. We pray for our presidents, senators, representatives, governors, mayors, all, all city officials, those that protect us near and far, our first responders. We pray for our teachers. We pray for those that protect our homes, our streets, our children, our way of life. We thank you, Lord. We pray that the city officials, our city officials here in this room tonight make wise decisions. Be with them, Lord. We pray for the weak, the homeless, those that are shut in, those that are struggling with substance abuse, mental illness, and those that don't know you. We ask that you let your spirit rest upon each and every person in this room tonight. We pray that you bless us here tonight, Lord. Be in the midst of this place. We ask that your will be done, guide and strengthen, protect your people that are called and elected to serve this community. And, Lord, we stand, we send a special prayer for the victims in, in the latest disaster in Turkey, and the families, and those that are involved in the recovery. Now, Lord, all this we ask in your son's precious name. Amen and amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Doug, would you do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have council reports. And can we start with you, Councilwoman Williams, tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I wanted to report on this really awesome call that I had with City of Vacaville Economic Developer Development Director, Don Burris. I spoke to him in just kind of a prep, well, two reasons. A, a prep in talking to our own city staff. I just wanted kind of a primer. But the real reason is because he was referred to me so many times in just a conversation that, that we had, in Solano County, we had the GOAT of economic development right here in Solano County. So I was really curious in, in talking to him and, and did so. And I wanted to report three takeaways that I got from him, because I thought it was pretty awesome and I just wanted to share it with my, my colleagues and the citizens. So he, in talking to him, he was saying that, that our economy, when we think about Fairfield economy, also think about it in the regional context, understanding what is powerful about Fairfield, the city of Fairfield, what our strengths were, but also in a regional context surrounding us being right there on I-80. I-80 being, he calls it the nation's corridor, and that it's not just locally, you know, it gets us home and into work and back, but also it is infrastructure. It is where we see trucks going to and from. So thinking about it in this really wider context, he also mentioned that, that they spent a lot of time really building their marketing budget surrounding, highlighting what was strong about Vacaville. And I thought that was powerful because we would do that with the city of Fairfield, what would drive us and bring other industries here to Fairfield. And so he was saying that, you know, he built up a marketing budget of conferences and, and trade shows and different things, and really highlighted what's powerful about them and that we should do the same if we aren't. And the third point that I wanted to bring was that he was really clear on the five strong industries of Vacaville. And so, you know, us being really strong about those five strong industries for Fairfield. And I look forward to, you know, new, I look forward to learning what those are. You all may know what that was, but I just thought that was just a great meeting and wanted to share it with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That was great. Councilman Tonason, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief tonight. I've been asking for a long time, and I think we've all had a part in this, but the, the debris and stuff that's built up under the bridges, we probably all get calls on that all the time. And it's a, it's an issue that we have to work out with Caltrans, with CHP, with, you have to get all of these organizations together. And I want to show you, we, we were able to accomplish that. Again, Public Works is here, a huge shout-out to Public Works, to the HART team. This was a monumental effort done on their part. So I just wanted to, these are, it's actually out there on Grow Brick Court, but I think it's all Ledgewood Creek, but there's some before and after pictures. We've been asking for this for a long time, but Bill, if you want to, so this is, this is a before. You can see they've got the washing machines and stuff down there. Apparently, there was a lot of those. Next one, Bill. It's just all junk down there, and we've been, this, the wall right there is, it went back all the way under the freeway. It took them, I think, four or five days to, to clean all this stuff out. And then if you can, and this is where Caltrans came in and they were doing all of the work under there. There was probably 20, 20-plus, 25-plus, they were staged over at a parking lot on Grow Brick Court. And then if you just see the final one, it's just, it was just a fantastic job and a lot of the neighbors out there, because the old Cordelia town, that, that creek runs right down to there, so the, the gripe was, and gripe is being milled, was that all of this is going to come down to us. So anyway, shout-out really to HART and to Public Works and certainly Caltrans and CHP. You guys did fantastic work, and that's all for me tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmen. That was great, great work. Councilman Vaccaro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first of all, it's always great to see everybody here, a lot of people in the chambers tonight. I'll, I'll be brief, too. I know we started late. We had a Capsolano JPA meeting, I want to say January 19th, that myself and Councilman Pandoro attend, the two-by-two committee, and actually, we did choose a new chair, a vice chair, I should say, because we're doing it alphabetically like STA does it, and that person is from, from Benicia. And we also discussed funds to move in front of the county. I'm not sure how that went today. I don't know if Mr. City Manager knows.
I'll just say it went very well, very, very positive momentum.
Okay, good. So I know that was something we were hoping for moving forward, some funds for a facility in Fairfield. And, you know, we, as the two-by-two committee continues to grow and continues to want to work toward a more, you know, open admittance for, as we work toward the homeless population, you know, this is something that we take very seriously, I believe, as a council. We talked about it at our, our workshop, which I'll let, you know, the mayor and vice mayor touch on, or anybody else who wants to talk about the, the workshop. But anyway, it was a good meeting. I think we have another one on February 23rd. And remember, those are open to the public and public comments are welcome at those meetings. So last thing I want to say is I attended a fundraiser for the Fairfield Community Services Foundation on Saturday, which was very successful. And as people, I don't know if, they know that the Fairfield Service, Community Services Foundation does the backpack giveaways in the beginning of the year, they do the Christmas toy drives, which most of us do participate in. It's a great, it's, it's a great organization, and I'm glad that it was very successful. So on that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just report back, I think at the last council meeting, I shared that I had gone door-to-door on the North Texas Mrs. Corridor, sharing information about a Business Watch meeting that was happening. So that meeting did happen. Our CAT team was there, which is our community action team, and our HIT team was also present. And they also, they allowed questions from business owners and gave them information as to what their rights are as business owners with regards to homelessness and other ordinances that they may not be aware of. It was a very productive meeting, and we're hoping to host those under the umbrella of the North Texas Business Association Quarterly. And I was just informed today that the association has a new website, so they're very excited that we have a new website with a bunch of resources for businesses, and that website is www.ntsba.org. So look, look into that if you are a business. I also attended the Bay Adapt Local Elected Regional Task Force. I was tapped by one of our local supervisors to participate in this task force. And this task force is for about a year, and what we're going to be looking at is sea-level rise. And so many of you all, we don't have any, we don't have any big ponds or seas like sea level next to us, but we do. We have Susun next to us, and Susun's going to be impacted, and they are a neighbor, and when Susun is impacted, we, as their neighbor, are impacted. But we also have a lot of our community that works in the Bay Area. And so how is that going to impact the cities that are within our perimeter? So we're going to be talking about how regionally we can look into this issue and figure out ways to, to move, move forward together. And lastly, I just wanted to share that Travis Air Force Base had their first Civic Leaders' Breakfast of the year. And so these meetings are held so that civic leaders, so my colleagues and I and other members of Solano County cities can come and meet with wing commanders and base command in, in a breakfast style. And we get updates from the different commanders. We had a presentation around airmen resiliency, so they talked about different programs to help airmen gain resiliency on base, but also how to connect them with the community, right? Because they are part of our community, and they are one of our biggest employers. And so we have to figure out ways to how to be able to partner with them. And so that was a great, a great breakfast, and I encourage, you know, more of my colleagues to attend, because there are really great ways to connect with, with a really big community partner that we have in our backyard. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Hi, Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for being in the chamber this evening and for watching from home. It's always a better meeting when the chamber is full. So thank you so much. And I will be brief as well. First off, I would like to request, Madam Mayor, that we adjourn this meeting tonight in the memory, the loving memory of Mayreen Bates.
Absolutely.
As many of you know, Mayreen Bates was a tireless educator, a lifelong learner, and an all-around lovely person, who has left a lovely legacy of experience and knowledge and kindness and service to the community that we all should be happy to commemorate. And so this Friday, there will be a celebration of her lovely life here at City Hall, at the Pond. Here at City Hall, it will be at 4:30, and there will be some light programming, but we're inviting everyone from the public to come and help us celebrate the legacy of Mayreen Bates. We're going to miss her. And it is Black History Month, and thank you to the city and for all of you who are contributing, continuing to contribute to the effort of making sure that Black Americans and Black people all over the world, you know, have dignity and equal access to everything that the Constitution of the United States of America promises us to have. We will be holding, I'm thankful to say, the Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield CAN, in conjunction with the Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce, and the city of Fairfield will be holding a Black History Month Festival on Saturday, February 25th, beginning at 2:00 p.m. It will be at the Bethel Community Church, 600 East Tabor. There will be food, food trucks, live music, and some light programming as well. And it's, it's just another opportunity for us to get together and celebrate the diversity that Solano County is known all over the country for. So again, that's on Saturday, February 25th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Bethel Community Church. And with that, I said I was going to keep it light, fast, okay, that's it. That's it for now.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and Councilman Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, it's been a busy first, first month or so. I was able to attend with some of my colleagues the League of California's City Welcoming Training for New Council Members and Mayors last week, or two weeks ago. I found it very informative. I did learn quite a bit, especially the training on policy role in land use planning. I really enjoyed that training a lot. And I was able to pick up a few ongoing educational credits and ethics as well. Not to mention that I get to know some of my colleagues a little better. We spent some time together away from the dais, and, and that was also very nice. We did get to have our city council retreat, which Councilmember Rick was saying, and that was last Friday and Saturday. And again, I thought it was very informative. I would like to thank the whole staff who put that on. They had to work very hard. It was a very good turnout. The tacos were great. My only wish was that we had a little more of, of our public, of the community involvement and attendance there. But I did get to visit and know and work with a lot of the city planners, managers, and employees, and it was a very good event, I thought. I did start the touring of Fairfield facilities and other departments, and I'm looking forward to see more and do some of more of the tours. As a new councilman, learning is, is a big curve in the beginning, and I'm really enjoying, enjoying what they have set up for me. They keep me pretty busy. And I did take my place on the Board of Directors for the Fairfield Susun Sewer District, and I attended my first meeting on January 30th. And that also was very informative, and I'm looking forward to working there. I'm also excited to be here tonight and to continue the work. And I want to thank, thank you, Mayor, for all that you're doing, and I appreciate you very much. Lastly, I'd just like to ask everybody for some prayers and thoughts to the people of Turkey. There are up to 6,000 dead in that horrible earthquake, and I think if we can just take a moment to... Thank you, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. And I'm going to just, just come right off of that, and I'm going to report that this weekend, as the councilman just said, we met and planned for the year what we want to focus on, and it's, it's the, the things that you told us that you want us to focus on. And that includes, of course, quality of life here for everybody in every corner of the city, no matter where you live. Also, obviously, homelessness, which hurts all of us, and it's inhumane. And so we are going to work really hard and in a different way, and, and we're going to get this done. As, as this, I'm going to tell you right now, and you can see it, this is the best council ever. You guys did a good job choosing them. They're awesome. And so I just want to say that's, you know, that's what we did, and we did get to spend some more time together, work together, and it was, it was really touching. I told them that I am in my new role here. I'm really humbled, and I've come out and I've made some mistakes already, and I'm going to do that. But I'll always, always step up and say, I did that. I'm sorry. I'm going to try this way, and hopefully, that's better. So I want you to know that if you ever catch me doing something you don't like, just tell me, because I'm going to fix it. And I own what I do, so. And then the other thing that I wanted to tell you about is, I also just got onto a couple of, of meetings that I haven't been to before, because as mayor, you sit on them. And one of them is the, they call it squads, the Solano County Water Agency, and it's super important, obviously, because we all need water. And this oversees water, flooding, all of those kinds of things. And one of the things, things that I learned there was something that I just did not know, and I want to tell you about it. And that is, Lake Berry S is our main source of water here in Fairfield, and it gets here to where we treat it and all through canals. And the canals are breaking down. And it, you know, they were made a long time ago, like 1952 or something, and when it got down to the Fairfield area, they were cutting back on prices. It was getting expensive. So our part of the canal is a little thinner, and it's starting to show cracks. So we are looking at ways to maybe put pipes in instead of just use the canal, and that way, if a pipe breaks down in the future, we could just take that part out. It's really important, because in some floods, I recall, must have been five years ago, the canal, which is right behind the Rockville Cemetery, it spilled over, and it affected some of the resting places of folks there. And so we don't want, obviously don't want that. It's super important that we get that fixed. So we're going to work on that. I'm going to be going back to Congress with some, to lobby for some money to get this done, so our water source is safe. And it's not in danger right now of, of collapsing altogether, but the engineers are going in and looking at it, and it is, it's an issue. So I wanted to tell you about that. And then the other thing is the Solano Transportation Authority, which I'll be going to again this week. And there, I just wanted to bring up, one of the things that we'll be talking about is Vandon Road, and going out to Vandon High School, we've had a lot of issues there. People, the roadways aren't finished yet, and so this is a key piece. Me, the Vacaville Mayor, and one of the supervisors are working on, on, on that and getting an update this week. So anyway, I just want to let people know, because it is, it is a big concern. Unfortunately, this year, we lost a stu, a, a young lady in, in a crash by there, but it was during the floods, but we got to make sure that's safer. And then the last thing that I want to say, and I'm going to try to move this along a little faster, is the city manager and I... faster, is the city manager and I went out to the base and, and ate what they called an immersion for me, because I'm a new mayor. And they, they took me around, and I've been here my whole life, so I know a little bit about Travis, but I didn't know these things that they saw, you know, they showed me. And it's so high-tech, and we're so, so, so important now out here because of the threats from China. And so, we, right now, also are taking a lot of the munitions over to Europe in the fight over there in Ukraine. We're a major, major mover of those. And so, so, that was it. I got to go up and see every, everything around. And one thing that I would like my colleagues and all of us to remember is, it's a real threat to come up against that base with housing, with windmills. Windmills make it so they cannot use their radars properly. So, we have to watch for those things and be really, really careful on what we're doing out there, and to talk with our sister cities around too, and the county, to make sure we're not threatening that, because that, there are so many jobs out there. It's $2.7 billion a year around here. So, yeah, we've gotta be really careful. So, that's, that's it. Now, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll be real brief. I know we were already running behind. For the last year and a half plus, there's been lots of discussions with city council about lighting and landscape maintenance districts. And so, we are going to be releasing the engineers' reports tomorrow for any of the LLMDs that we've been studying and re-engineering over the last year. And then, coming up in March and April, we're gonna have quite a few opportunities for community engagement and outreach and education on a new Proposition 218 process for a handful of those districts. So, for those that might live in a lighting and landscape maintenance district, if you've been following, you know, please pay attention to the engineers' report. That's a critical report that comes out tomorrow. And we will be doing some outreach with, with staff and with our consultants to make sure that we answer any questions that are out there over the next, I'll say, you know, eight, eight weeks plus before ballots go out in April. And that's my report, Madam Mayor.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm what you said at the beginning of the meeting, closed session was recessed by you, and we'll be reconvening at the end of this meeting back on the fourth floor of the city manager's office immediately following this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is that it with you?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
Not really a report, but I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm madly in love with my new grandsons.
Oh, yay!
They, identical twin boys, and they were born on January 30th. Theo weighed five pounds, nine ounces, and, no, that was Miles. And Theo weighed six pounds, seven ounces. So, my daughter was carrying around 12 and a half pounds of baby. But everyone's healthy and happy, and it's a real blessing, so, thank you.
Congratulations, Grandma Clerk. Yeah, that's great. And so glad that they're healthy. All right, then, we're gonna go ahead and go to presentations, then, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Presentation one, poem reading, "Unyielding Tenacity," by our poet laureate Suzanne Bruce.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Moy and city council members and audience. First, I do want to share with you how much I am enjoying being an advocate for poetry in the city of Fairfield. It has been a wonderful experience and a team-building thing between the communities' shops and, and resources and libraries. One of the things that I'm most proud of is doing, promoting student poetry. And thank you to the Daily Republic for allowing me a space once a month in the newspaper to have student poems posted, and also to a local coffee shop downtown, The Coffee Bar, that also is allowing me to change out once a month the student poems. All the poems that are submitted to me, I print out, I, I mount on foam core, and then I post at The Coffee Bar. This month's Coffee Bar postings are from the Rodriguez High School Poetry Project that one of the teachers did on Black History Month. And so, all the poems in there are student perspectives of Black history. Do take time to go in there, have a wonderful cup of coffee tomorrow. It's an amazing owner, it's a darling shop, and the students are so excited that their work is out there. So, thank you for the opportunity to do this. For tonight's presentation, I want to share with you, the NCAA P was founded in 1909. In 1915, 50 years after the 13th Amendment was ratified, historian Carter Woodson and Minister Jesse Moreland founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. But it wasn't until 1976 that we designated February as Black History Month here in America, endorsing a theme every month. You will see why this year's theme, Black Resistance, is most important. It is a testament to African-Americans how they have resisted and ongoing and, and continuing oppressions. We have so much work to do still. My poem tonight, excuse me, reflects the tenacity, not only to commemorate, but to bring awareness of these historic ongoings, and, and like I said, so much more that we still need to do. "Unyielding Tenacity." Journeys with paths where potholes are too often and too deep. Disparity amplifies struggles. Opportunity a ladder only some are allowed to climb. Why must this go on? Why can't a song be composed where we all can sing, not just hummed by a few? Glorious gospels remembering pain, resisting repeating repressions, recognizing inequality. Respect, respect, respect liberating minds in society for those deprived of rights. Strength lies in determination. Justice the goal, bravery the backbone. Like Harriet Tubman's Underground Railroad leading enslaved to freedom. Like Malcolm X's skillful words invigorating civil rights. Like Maya Angelou's Still I Rise, inspiring so many with ongoing perseverance. New roads opened by unyielding tenacity. More paths needed, more songs to sing. More freedom and fairness for all. Awareness to pave the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Poet Laureate. That was beautiful. Next presentation?
Yes. Proclamation declaring Black History Month, presented by Vice Mayor Pam Bertani, to our President of Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce, Temari Richardson.
Come on up, Miss Temari Richardson. And I see that the board is here this evening, this amazing, wonderful, effective, efficient, brilliant board. Can they stand with us?
Please, yes.
I am so happy and thankful to make this presentation. The Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce has been an amazing partner with the city of Fairfield on numerous projects now, and I'm looking forward to many more years to come of this great working relationship with this amazing chamber that gets it done. You're looking at the chamber who helped the Clergy Action Network execute our first annual Juneteenth Festival last June, and it was absolutely fabulous. And I'm going to tell you that working with Temari and this board has been nothing short of amazing. They do the work of 500 people, fast and correctly, and that is the truth. So, it's Black History Month, and here is the proclamation that you can hold while I read it for Black History Month, February 2023. And I'm really proud of the city of Fairfield for really acknowledging in a very authentic and heartfelt way the significance of this month and these events to our lives and for our whole community. Whereas Black History Month has been celebrated in the United States during the month of February since 1970, the theme for 2023 is Black Resistance, which explores how African-Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms, especially the racial terrorism of lynching, racial programs, and police killings since the nation's earliest days. And whereas these efforts have been to advocate for dignified, self-determined life in a just democratic society in these United States of America and beyond the United States' political jurisdiction. Whereas the 1950s and 1970s in the United States were defined by actions such as sit-ins, let these words sink in, please, sit-ins, because it was not politically correct to do this, and these folks literally risked their lives with these actions, like sit-ins, boycotts, walkouts, strikes by black people and white allies in the fight for justice against discrimination in all sectors of society, from employment to education to housing. Black people have had to consistently push the United States, let me repeat that, black people have had to consistently push the United States of America to, to live up to its ideals of freedom, liberty, and justice for all. Whereas systematic oppression has sought to negate much of the dreams of our leaders like Langston Hughes and Nora Neil Hurston, and our freedom fighters, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Septima Clark, and Fannie Lou Hamer, fought to realize, and whereas, black people have sought ways to nurture and protect black lives, and for the autonomy of their physical and intellectual bodies through armed resistance, voluntary immigration, nonviolence, education, literature, sports, media, legislation, and politics. Black-led institutions and affiliations have lobbied, litigated, legislated, protested, and achieved success. Amen. So, now, therefore, Catherine Cat Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023, Black History Month, in the city of Fairfield, and asks our citizens to celebrate the multitude of contributions that black people have made to the community and to the world at large, and to recognize and educate ourselves as to their central role in the United States' history, and to appreciate the struggle they endure. Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce, you are a shining example. And I think that your work in this community makes our forefathers proud that we're continue to, we're continue, we can continue to work together with not just us, with everybody in the city and everybody in the community to achieve the goals that have been long fought for. So, thank you for being here, everyone. I am so proud of every single one of you, and I look forward to us continuing to work together to do great things, because there's great things to be done.
Definitely. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Pam Bertani and Mayor Cat Moy. This, when I found out about this, I wanted my board to definitely be here, because no one should be a silo. Nothing is done in singular, everything is done with a team. So, I want to thank everyone. Black History Month is not just for black people, it is American history, and it is everything that makes us great, it is everything that is in this room and everything that we astound to be. So, thank you so much. We will accept this on behalf of our Board of Directors. We will accept this on behalf of our members. We will accept this on behalf of the audience in the, in the auditorium here today, and we will try our best to continue doing good work in the community and make you proud of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
by Mayor Moy.
Hey, hey. How are you?
And she's going to present to, I believe, Donak Quintero of Pink Lemonade.
Yeah, so, we're gonna have you hold this. And these two, they're my friends, and they are also the creators, if you will, of the nonprofit Pink Lemonade. And they help people who are going through treatment or going through cancer recovery. They go and do all kinds of things they can tell you about. After I got through, if my cancer treatment was strong enough, I volunteered with them so I could see exactly what they did, and it's amazing. So, I thought about them today to bring forward to accept this, and I'm honored that they're here. All right. This is about National Cancer Prevention Month, which is also February. Whereas nearly 1,958,310 Americans will be diagnosed with cancer this year, and more than 609,820 will die. However, research shows that up to half of all cancer cases and deaths are preventable with the knowledge and education we have today. And whereas there are more than 100 types of cancer, the most prevalent are lung, breast, rectum, and colon. Skin, non-melanoma, stomach, and prostate are the top five most common, according to the World Health Organization. Whereas prevention and early detection are more crucial than ever, and are proven practical strategies to lower healthcare costs and extend life expectancy. And whereas, by making healthy choices, like maintaining a healthy weight, staying active, using sun protection, avoiding tobacco, and limiting alcohol consumption can you lower your risk. Whereas lung cancer still causes more than 350 deaths per day, the highest number of deaths for all types of cancer, more than breast, prostate, and pancreatic cancers combined. And whereas people who smoke are 25 times more likely to develop lung cancer than those who never smoked. And whereas, by practicing self-exams, knowing your family medical history, and getting regular cancer screenings, you can help detect certain cancers early and have a better treatment outcome. Now, therefore, I, Catherine Cat Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim February as National Cancer Prevention Month in Fairfield, and I urge all of our citizens to practice healthy habits and schedule regular doctor's appointments and preventative cancer screenings. And again, the Quinteros here, can you just say a few words?
Well, thank you. We're honored to be here, and I just want to say thank you to Mayor Moy and for the community. We couldn't do this without you. And just so you know, I'm a breast cancer survivor. I lost my mom to breast cancer when I was seven, so after my journey, got healthy, decided I needed to do something with my husband's help. And so, we help anybody in Solano County that's battling cancer. We provide meals and general support. So, but we could not do this without the support of this community, Fairfield, Vacaville, all of Solano County. So, thank you for this, this honor, and we, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think I was gonna say anything, but I recognize a couple of people that have to give a couple of individual shout-outs, too. So, early on, Ms. Councilwoman Thoreese Penduro, she was there helping us with some events. We were very young, still trying to grow, fundraising. She and her family came out and volunteered at some fundraising events. So, Thoreese, thank you very much. You were important to us, very special to us. And Mayor Moy?
Councilmember Tonison, too.
Of course, Councilmember Tonison, too, he's always there, always doing something. And Mayor Moy, I, I appreciate you. Mayor Moy, I appreciate you, I thank you so much for the work you've done. She came and volunteered with our organization, not as a, I don't know, for political glory or any sort of recognition, she's came and did it, and she did the work that we do. She went and delivered meals to people who needed it. So, I know you never took any credit for that, but thank you so much. You are very important.
I'm supposed to tell people I'm nice?
I'm doing it, I'm doing it. You're a nice person, that's, you know, I'm just going to say it, but thank you for doing that. It's very important to us.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the Raise Your Hand feature if you're online or press *9 on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Jeff Traeger.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I want to say something. These people do a wonderful job for Pink Fest.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we, about, what was it, eight or nine years ago, Doris? We had the first Pink Fest on the city lawn. We had Pete Escavito, we had the lead singer from Tower of Power, we had three members of Tower of Power. We had the lead singer from Santana, and we had young Gabby Wilson, multi-platinum Grammy and Oscar Award-winning her, she showed up and played. I mean, it was a wonderful, wonderful, these people really do a wonderful job, so I want to condemn it.
Jeffrey, you did a great job helping with that all those times. Thank you.
My pleasure. At the Downtown Theater this month, we have iconic Dance Factory Seventh Annual Dance Recital, and on the 18th, we have the House of Floyd, which is a tribute to Pink Floyd, and on the 24th, we have James Garner, tribute to Johnny Cash, and we just came off a almost sold-out show for Greg Proop's comedy show, so maybe we're going to be the new Pepperbellies, I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'd like to place just a little bit of the groups that we got coming up this month. I never do this right.
I hear the train is coming, it's rolling around the bend, and I ain't seen the sunshine since, I don't know when, but I'm stuck in Folsom Prison, and time keeps dragging on. But that train keeps a-rollin', all down the sand and coal. It's a noise blossom special, bringing my baby back. Hi, baby.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thanks, Jeff.
Our next speaker is Richard Carangello.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm Mr. Richard Carangello. I want to thank the rubber for the awesome prayer, and thank you everybody here for keeping God in our lives. At this time, Mayor and Council, with your permission, I'd like to defer my time to Jack Bastian, please.
All right.
Is it okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor and Council, electeds, high staff, David. I do want to talk tonight about City Church and the program down there. I think all of you have been there. If you have not been there, I'd really urge you to go in and look around for yourself. Have Scott Mulvey guide you around, I think you'll find it educative, does an amazing job there. I became aware that the inspections of City Church were becoming a problem, I think midsummer at some point, and heard more and more and more, there was friction, there's no question there was friction there, but it hit me immediately, I think I have a real strong desire, just as a citizen, to get homeless people off the street, and that's what City Church does, 40, 60 people at a time, and if there was a question about closing it down, that's 40 or 60 people on the street we don't want. We want to have them housed in a program. So, I got alarmed, I called Scott, and I know Scott, I've known him for a long time, I can't quite remember the dates, he served with me on the Mayor's Crime Commission, if you remember that, years ago, and was very supportive, and I called him this morning, I said, "Scott, how long do we go back?" And we put our heads together and noodled this out. I went down to Gateway Village. Do you remember Gateway Village, down here at Tabor in Pennsylvania, across from David Weir? And that is our low-income housing project of the city, and it has been plagued by trouble, gangs and guns, let's just face it. And I went down there years ago to, because I had a refugee family, I wanted to get into low-income housing, walked in there, and there was a bunch of kids having a party. What's this? And they were having fun, and I walked up to this man, and I said, "What is this? Who are you?" And it was Scott Mulvey. He was living there for six years with his wife, Deborah, while he was pastor of this church on the other side of town, and he was rehabilitating that place by himself and his wife. It was, well, the church helped, too, because he brought people over. They had parties, they had after-school tutoring, they had field trips, they did everything for those kids. And then he confronted the gang bangers with the guns, and he says, "I will identify you if I see you with a gun, or if I see any shooting, I will report it to police. Rely on it. But also, I want you gone, just leave. If you harm me," he said, "you're harming your own family. I'm helping your kids, and I'm helping your wives hold it together," as, you know, in a desperate situation. And they left slowly over time. Six years, in the last three years, it was very calm at the village there. He went, he told me this afternoon, from 26 911 calls a month average.
Jack, did you put in a speaker's card as well?
Did I? Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you can put another three minutes on for him. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. It went from 26 per month to one and a half per month. This guy produces. I was so impressed, and that was our beginning. Then, after six years, he moved over to City Church and lived at City Church in a trailer. How many of you would like to live in a trailer? You know, but he wants to be close to that people, and of course, he made his three programs. First, he says, "We're going to do something for addicted people, live in for a year, a year and a half, and get them out of that lifestyle if they're willing. Sign a contract, here's the program." Program's a very important word. And then he said, "People who are homeless but want to get out of it, come on over. We'll give you meals, we'll give you computer assistance for finding a job. You've got to find a job within two or three weeks, and you'll be here for six months, getting money together to get a house and back online on regular life." And it works, very successful. Then he looked at people who were just marginal homeless, who still have a car, they're just gripping a little bit onto regular life still, they have a car, they have a job, the kids go to school, and they're trying to hold it together, but they don't have enough money for housing. These are women and children, these are men, women, and children sometimes, and he says, "Come on in for the night, we'll supervise you, we'll protect you, come in for dinner, shower, breakfast, you have to be gone by 8:30, and clean up after yourselves." I mean, honestly, this is a terrific program, and nobody else is doing anything like this. It's something I think Fairfield can be proud of. I mean, the mayor, excuse me, no, not the mayor, the city manager and the police chief in Vallejo called him on Zoom and talked to him at length, "Come down to Vallejo, we want you down here in that program." Oakland said, "Come down here, we want you." Richmond said, "We want you." And he says, "No, I'm here in Fairfield," but it was true with this, the recent incidents. He says, "Fairfield apparently doesn't want me." What an ironic situation. So, I got involved, my first calls were from the city, to the city manager, and he assured me that we, he does, we do want him, thank you, and was very helpful. I got involved in mid-December, finally, went to a Zoom meeting, the first one, and it was a long time, the city manager said he would just pop in, but he stayed the whole two hours and gave us very good...
You have 30 seconds?
How much, three, oh my gosh. Okay, so, there's health and safety code violations there, no question. He is working on that right now, and I think everyone's satisfied that that's working. Backflow preventers, 7,000 bucks, roof, 40,000 bucks, finished, portable showers disconnected, no one in the tents, and so on. The second thing was zoning, and very threatening. You can't have overnight park in any zoning. You can't have people in tents. Okay, you can't have people in tents either, very threatening. And then, on the last week, was the arbitration, and Jeff Thomas, in a two-minute discussion, showed me and everybody there how you can do it with our presence zoning. So, it's a hope on the horizon, wanted to give you a third-person's view on this. I hope we can continue to support City Church. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Carr.
Yes, thanks for hearing me out. I got two issues, and one of them falls under the same thing, we're talking about the bridges and the homeless. I'm Doug's brother and a longtime resident of Fairfield, and I live right in the middle of Fairfield. I live right over by the graveyard and the old Montgomery Estates, and I walk that lineal path every day with my dog. And what the creek looks like is horrible, and, you know, I've sent pictures to Doug, and I posted them, and when I first moved into that area and I was going in there, there was no fencing around the creeks, homeless was pretty lightweight, and I would approach them with a garbage bag and a $10 bill, and I'd say, "Hey, fill the bag up, clean this area up, I'll give you another 10 tomorrow." That doesn't work anymore. They won't do nothing for 20 bucks, even clean up their own mess. I believe this is your district, and if you would just take a walk down that lineal path between Union Avenue and Texas Street, the city has come in and fenced off that area to keep people out of the creek. They live inside the fenced area, and I've walked that path and seen Fairfield PD tell them to get out of that fenced area over and over and over, and now they live within it, and all the garbage goes in the creek. There is, it's, there's everything in there, like, you know, why do you need a washing machine down there? You know, okay, so, that's the one issue. The other issue I have is Rockville Park, was there the day the park opened, and been going there ever since. I can tell you I've had parties, I rode horses, I've snuck in there on motorcycles, I've done everything in that park through my whole life. Now, I'm a mountain biker. Because of my age and conditions to my heart, because my heart rate gets too high, I've gone to e-bikes, Class 1 e-bikes, they're only pedal assist, and Rockville Park is one of the only places in the Bay Area that doesn't allow them. So, I got to go to Napa, and I got to go to different places. Throughout the winter months, when it's really wet, Rockville Park is a gem because it's all rock, there's no mud. Most of the other places have cattle come in, and the trails are so chewed up and muddy, we can't ride them, and there's a huge group, and talking with the people within the mountain bike community and the e-bike community, we are willing to pay fees yearly to help improve and volunteer to work on trails. But, you know, Rockville Park is in my backyard, it's like a second home to me, and I can't take my e-bike there, and so I just wanted to know what I'd have to do to change that. And this is only pedal assist, this does not have a throttle, you have to pedal these, and they are governed, they don't go faster than an analog bike, they don't. That's a misconception, and that's all I got. Thank you for hearing me out.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jesse Branch.
Moving a little slow because of my age. Madam Mayor, council members, and my fellow citizens, my name is Jesse Branch, I'm no stranger to Fairfield, I'm no stranger to the council, but I will introduce myself. Again, my name is Jesse Branch, retired Sergeant Major, United States Marine Corps, retired. I'm also a lifetime member of the Marine Corps League. This is, that's what I want to talk about tonight, just for a couple of minutes. The Marine Corps League is a service organization similar to the VFW and the American Legion. The year 2023 marks 100-year anniversary of this organization. Now, my purpose here tonight, or just to let the council know and the citizens know that now there is a chapter of the Marine Corps League in Vacaville, and it is the Solano County. Solano County was the only county in the immediate area that did not have Marine Corps League. So, Marine veterans, sailors, and other veterans had to go to Yolo County, Annapolis, et cetera. So, now it's established, and the name of the chapter is the Charles Hallman Detachment Number 1486. Meetings are held the first Wednesday of every month in Vacaville at the Veterans Memorial Building. The time of the meeting is 1900 hours, that's 7 o'clock civilian time, in case somebody goes, "No." We would love to have members of the council, the community, to come by and pay us a visit. This morning, I was at the Board of Supervisors with the same message. For additional information, I'm going to give you a phone number, the number of the Commandant of this detachment. His name is Royery Nichols. Phone number is 760-835-4176. Or you can contact me at 707-386-6438. I have been designated as the point of contact for Fairfield, Sassoon, and Vallejo. We look forward to working with city councils, the Board of Supervisors, and the citizens. I'm one for veterans, being a veteran myself, we can't do enough for our veterans. It hurts my heart to see veterans as homeless, veterans that has to get food stamps in order to support their families. So, we just can't do enough. So, I just want to say thank you for your time, and have a blessed rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is Brian Lynch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, I want to further address the number-one area of blight in the city. But first, last week, some very interesting experience I appreciated. I had a couple of good days at work. I got to participate in the council retreat. Thank you for that. And I went to small claims court. I sued my neighbor. If you look at all the paperwork and the evidence, I sued her because of the dog kennel she ran. She ran, she had to require business licenses and renewed it. But now I and the judge, who I said proved my case, don't believe that's appropriate or legal. But the dog kennel is not the real reason I sued her. Then why, you ask? Vacant lots. Vacant lots contributing to the fear and distrust of neighbors. And parks, specifically Tabor Park, rundown and in need of a facelift. She and I never got to meet at the park and appreciate its social, physical, emotional, and economic benefit. Therefore, I implore with you to continue with the parks' master plan and with vacant lots. I gave you a plan of action a while back. I can probably get everything donated. This is the issue that I believe influences the behaviors that lead to crime, violence, fear, homelessness, and a multitude of other social ills. The lots we say we don't care, no one's in control, and there are no rules, and there are no laws. Notice how we find homeless individuals in uncared-for vacant lots in other similar areas. So tonight, I'm going to ask you to help us, I and a neighborhood group, make an example of one of the city's lots, preferably the one at Pennsylvania and Broadway. I'll write up an action plan, get it to you. Next week, I ask you to talk about it during your retreat, during lunch, dinner, or when you have the time, and give me a response. We communicate. If it can't be done, let me know. If we want blue wood chips, let me know. Crush granite around the border so the fires don't get out of control, let me know. Then we go to work. Now we have an example to bring other property owners and sell or convince them of the idea, what we want in our city. If we don't address the lots and other blight, many of the social ills will continue, I believe. This fix addresses what I believe is the problem.
Brian, you have 30 seconds?
Not the aftermath. We can change this city for the better. Have a good night.
Brian, I got a question. Mayor?
Yeah.
So you're talking about the vacant lot with all the concrete white pylons around it? Okay, I can get behind that. I'll look into that for you and see if we can't come up with something.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't have any other speaker cards, and there are no hands raised online.
Okay, so we'll go to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the consent calendar notice?
Yes, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Do we have any public speakers on these items?
I just have one card for item 15, which is not on consent.
Okay. Then I'm going to enter, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams, you have a question on the consent?
Mm-hmm. I wanted to ask a question on item number seven and 10.
Seven and 10, so we should pull those? We're going to go ahead and pull items seven and 10, and we'll take those in that order.
I'll read item seven.
Okay.
Resolution 2023-11 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the disposition and development agreement between the City of Fairfield and Scannell Properties. And Dwayne Dollman is the contact person on that item.
Kate Patrice, would you like to ask him your question? Okay, very good.
Yes, please. So my question was, just looking through this agenda item, what made you all want to sell this property specifically?
So we came to the council, this is part of our surplus land that the city owned. So the process was that we came to the council with our intent to dispose of surplus land, and this property was one of those properties.
And then my other question is, I know this went to an RFP process, but when I think about land, you know, it goes up in value, so even though, you know, 3 million looks like a lot of money, we assured that we couldn't have gotten 5 million, 6 million, 7 million dollars for it.
So we're bound by getting appraisal. So initially, when we did the RFP with the development company that we picked first, that was based on an appraised value. They weren't ever able to perform under the DDA, so then we went to the second person on that list. And since time had gone by since the first round, then we got an updated appraisal. So the value that we have, or the purchase price in the DDA reflects the updated appraised value.
Awesome. And my final question is, what happens to this money? It's, we get, we have 2.9 million dollars. What are we doing with it?
Let me pull it up here. Oh, there is. I have a number of items here. So that particular one, it goes, oh, okay. It goes into the Other Miscellaneous Revenue for Corp Yard Electrification Fund Account.
Thank you.
Any other questions on seven?
Thank you.
Okay. And then item 10, please.
Yes, item 10, Resolution 2023-15.
I'm going to back up a little bit. I need us to vote on that separately, so could I have a motion for?
I'm sorry, you need to open public comment.
Oh, I need to back back up. Is anybody here who would like to comment on item seven? I'm not seeing anybody, nobody online, I guess. All right, now I will go ahead and ask for a motion to, a motion by Mr. Vaccaro, second from Councilwoman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? There's unanimous vote, yes? And now we'll go to item 10.
Item, excuse me, item 10. Resolution 2023-15 of the City of Fairfield approving amendments to the Economic Development revolving loan program guidelines and authorizing the city manager to make any further amendments to the guidelines as needed and to sign any documents or contracts associated with the program. And Latan Jones is our presenter on this item.
Yes, Latan Jones standing in for Latanya Torones.
I was going to say, you don't look like Latanya.
Okay, Councilwoman Williams, your questions?
Thank you. When I read this agenda item, I became a little concerned because being a small business owner myself and connections with other small business owners, access to capital is a thing. And it's a thing we, you know, I don't kind of take it lightly when we want to switch that up. I wanted to know a little bit more about what made this program unsuccessful.
In a nutshell, I would actually also ask Economic Development to come up, but in a nutshell, the program was actually undersubscribed, and we've actually had the program for a number of years. And it was, I think it's maybe like four loans or so that actually took place with this program. And so essentially, we had money sitting in the Community Development Block Grant Program. And what the problem with that causes is that is whenever we have money that's just sitting in the Community Development Block Grant Program, then it counts against the program as HUD considers what's called timeliness. And so timeliness may basically means is that whenever you have more than 1.5 times the actual amount of grant that you receive in that program, then that program would be considered not meeting timeliness. And so for a number of years, with the exception of last year, the City of Fairfield has not met timeliness because of monies that is just sitting there not moving.
And so that, and I, you know, and I read in the packet that the HUD guidelines were a very high and difficult threshold. But was there any inquiry to HUD or who funded this program to make any type of adjustments to make that threshold, especially through the pandemic, that make those thresholds easier to access?
I'll start, and then I'll pass the baton on to our Economic Development Manager. But I will say is that HUD is probably one of the more rigid funders that we have, because that's federal funding. And so the regulations are struck, are actually very strict, and they don't move. So what agencies can do is try to petition if there are extenuating circumstances, but more often than not, because these programs are provided throughout the country, they're not going to change those regulations, because then that creates precedent, and then now you have issues all over, potentially all over the country, if you did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this? Let me try that again. Any other questions, colleagues? How about in the public? Any questions from the public? I don't see any questions, no hands. Anybody online for that?
No.
All right. I will entertain a motion, so moved from Councilman Tonison, seconded by Councilman Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous? Yes? Thank you. And now we'll go ahead, and I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Moved by the Vice Mayor, second from Councilman Vaccaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move on to a public hearing now.
Public hearing. Public hearing and Resolution 2023-19 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving a negative declaration, ER 2023-003, for the 2023-20 to 2031 Housing Element Project, adopting the 2023 to 2031 Housing Element and forwarding the Housing Element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for certification. And our presenter is our Interim Director of Community Development, Dave Feinstein.
Good evening, Mayor Moy, members of the city council. I am Dave Feinstein, the city's interim Community Development Director. So staff is really pleased to bring you the next item, which is the update to the city's housing element of our general plan. The housing element is essentially the key document that we use to ensure that we are in compliance with a wide range of state laws. The housing element has a life of eight years, and once every eight years, we're required by the state to come back and update the housing element. That eight-year period is just now concluding, and so we've been working for about the last year to prepare an update to our housing element. Planning staff, along with the city's Housing Element Consultant, Dyad and Batia, have worked closely with our Housing Department, Latan Jones and his team, to prepare a housing element that we believe meets all of the requirements of state law. There have been a number of opportunities for public input along the way. Various aspects of this project have come before our planning commission three times in the last six months or so. Just recently, last week, the planning commission reviewed the proposed housing element before you and recommends that you adopt it. Staff, at the end of our presentation tonight, will also be recommending that you adopt the housing element and direct that we send it to the state, the Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, for their certification. And we believe that the document you have before you tonight meets all of the requirements that HCD has to certify our housing element. What I'm going to do is I'm going to turn the presentation over just for a brief bit to our Housing Element Consultant to walk you through a little bit of the background, what's required for the housing element, and talk to you about some of the comments we got from the public, as well as the state, and how we've addressed those. So we'll have Allison Moore, our consultant, come up and provide you that background.
Good evening, Mayor Moy and council members. My name is Allison Moore. I'm a planner at Dyad and Batia. My colleague Rajiv Batia is available over the Zoom to answer any questions if needed as well. Tonight, I will give a brief recap and some context on the housing element in Fairfield's housing needs, a description about public engagement, more information on the consultation process with the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, a brief overview of the negative declaration prepared, and the next steps. So a housing element is a required element that is part of the larger general plan update. You may know it as Fairfield Forward 2050. Its purpose is to provide opportunities for housing development for all economic segments of the community and remove constraints on housing supply and affordability over the time period of 2023 to 2031. The housing element is reviewed by and must be certified by HCD. And for the most part, the housing element before you uses Fairfield's current land use and zoning categories to inform housing site selection, but there will be other opportunities to explore housing, employment, shopping, infrastructure, and other land use components, as well as opportunities for more housing as part of the land use and other element updates. One of the fundamental components of the housing element is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. That is Fairfield's fair share of the number of housing units that must be planned for at various income levels over this eight-year period called a housing cycle. This is the sixth cycle. And while the overall number of housing units has gone down slightly since the last cycle, the need for and proportion of lower-income housing, including housing affordable to moderate, low, and very low incomes, has increased since the last cycle. Other parts of the housing element that are required include a needs assessment, in which the city must evaluate its existing supply and housing needs, particularly for special needs groups, a description of constraints and housing resources that may act as barriers or opportunity for housing production, a housing sites inventory and analysis, which identifies where in Fairfield there are sites or parcels that can accommodate housing to meet the RENA and affirmatively further fair housing, and then a list of housing strategies or programs, that is our housing action plan, that help meet housing needs identified in the sections I just described. With this sixth cycle, HCD is looking for a robust analysis of how the housing element is affirmatively furthering fair housing required by state law. That means that Fairfield must show how site selection and programs further access to opportunity throughout the city. This means integrating housing that could be affordable to lower incomes in more moderately resourced areas and using place-based strategies to improve quality of life and opportunity in lower-resourced areas. And in this map shown here, it shows low and moderate resourced areas as defined using criteria specified by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. That's mapped annually. But basically, they want to see lower-income units in the pink areas, and then programs to address quality of life in the brown areas. Having a housing element that is certified by HCD is very important, and there are consequences if a city does not have an adopted housing element that is compliant with state law. This can include fees and fines, ineligibility for state funds, and other consequences. The statutory deadline was January 31, and so it is important that adoption occur as soon as possible. An adopted element is required before sending to HCD for certification, and if certification does not occur within 120 days of January 31, this means the city will have one year from then to complete rezoning efforts rather than three. But on the other side, a compliant housing element also comes with a lot of benefits, including the ability to apply for a pro-housing designation. And this is where cities with that designation get incentives in the form of additional points or other preference in the scoring of competitive housing, community development, and infrastructure I'll talk a little bit about community engagement, which has been a key part of the housing element process and a requirement. and a requirement of a state-compliant element. Generally, the biggest issues that we have heard include addressing homelessness and adding more diverse housing types in the community, as well as a focus on infill housing, especially downtown and along major streets. And then with the council and with Planning Commission, we have also discussed transformation along other areas like North Texas and the Solana Town Center Mall, which can occur as part of larger general plan planning efforts. There was a 30-day public comment period for the housing element after publication in October and a seven-day review period. We, over the course of that process and other public comment processes, we received 20 letters with, from individuals and organizations. And thematic responses to these comment letters are included in Chapter 2. Some of the main themes we heard about were concerns about adding more housing in the Cordelia area and potential strain on infrastructure, also a theme that we've heard as part of general plan outreach, as well as desire for more clarity on how the policies and actions align with affirmatively furthering fair housing opportunities. So as I mentioned before, Fairfield must show that it is both equitably distributing and affirmatively furthering fair housing in areas of moderate opportunity. And as part of the general plan update, we will be addressing community concerns related to traffic, schools, and need for more commercial and services. And to address the second theme, we added several tables in the action plan to show that correlation and incorporated community input as well in, around language for several actions. The planning team has been in close contact with HCD as they have reviewed the element and has met informally with reviewers to proactively address any areas where more information was needed to fulfill state requirements. And in large part due to this coordination, Fairfield received a relatively short formal letter of review from HCD on the 3rd. The team has completed revisions as noted in the letter. And as Dave mentioned, we believe that the draft before you this evening meets all statutory requirements of state housing element law. The team has developed a negative declaration for the housing element, which states that the project will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment. And any rezoning efforts for the, the few number of sites that require it will occur in tandem or following the general plan update and full EIR for that comprehensive project. So should the council recommend adoption tonight? We will then send the adopted housing element to HCD for final compliance review and certification. And they will then have 60 days to make their determination. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the housing element or process. But that concludes my presentation.
All right, colleagues. I'm going to open this up if you have any questions of her. And then I'm going to go and open this for a public comment, the public hearing. And then I'll close that. And then if you have additional questions, we'll go there. So does anybody have a question at this time? Yes, Councilman Vaccaro?
Just a statement. I'd like to hear from the public first.
If possible, can we hear from the public first?
Sure, we can do that. Is, is everybody okay with that? No, okay, very good. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Yes, I have two speakers. The first one, Joe Green Heffern.
Good evening. Some of you are new, I haven't seen you before, but that's good. Anyway, my name is Joe Green Heffern and I live in North Cordelia. And I am not speaking in opposition to the housing element. I want that to be clear. In fact, I'm supportive of the city's efforts to provide a variety of housing in all neighborhoods. However, I do want to call your attention to a commitment that the city has made in the agenda report for the housing element update. And was mentioned by the planning staff. It says that the housing element directs that any future rezoning occurs in conjunction with the general update. And that update is not done yet. So as the city council has brought forward projects like Green Valley 3 Apartments, that is currently being considered by the Planning Commission tomorrow, it's directly relevant. This commitment was made in response to my public comments about the history of piecemeal rezoning and haphazard development in the North Cordelia area. There is a major imbalance in housing and public commercial services in that, this area, that will only be resolved when an assessment of needed services and a plan to achieve those services is in place before any further housing development occurs. To those of you unfamiliar with this area, if you don't live there, it's kind of hard to understand the issues that Cordelia are quite different from the rest of the city. And some of them may seem trivial to you, but public services. There is only one public basketball court in all of North Cordelia, and it is in the Village Green Park on the west side of Green Valley Road. So all the housing, all the apartments that have and will be built east have no public park, and this is apartment dwellers. Second, commercial services. There is only one grocery store, two if you count Costco, in all of Cordelia, north and south. And this serves Green Valley 2, not where most of the housing is. Considering the population served, this is a store density of one store per 15,000 people served in the Cordelia area. This compares to one in 11,000 people served in the rest of Fairfield and one in 9,000 people served for Napa. So the grocery and retail is greatly underserved in the Cordelia area. Third, transportation. Because there is not a full and pedestrian-friendly freeway interchange at Sisoon Valley Road, all westbound access to I-80 and all, almost all vehicle, bus, truck, and pedestrian traffic between North Cordelia and South Cordelia must go through one intersection at Business Center Drive and Green Valley Road.
Mr. Green, you have 26 seconds.
I hate to see what happens if there's a fire emergency. The trust of Cordelia residents in the city is on the line. Please live up to your commitment that there will be no rezoning to add housing until the general plan update is complete. Thank you for your time and for service to the Fairfield residents on council.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Nora Dezon.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak on this topic. I also am not against the housing element per se. It is a good thing to do. But I am very concerned about what's happening to District 1. If you look at the Plan Bay Area 2050, there are certain parts of Fairfield that are in fact targeted. But District 1 is not one of them. And we've got, as mentioned earlier, the Green Valley 2 apartment, excuse me, 3 apartments. The Green Valley 2 apartments is not even full. It's at 70% occupancy. Now the Mundy has no more capacity to take in schoolchildren. What are we doing? Now, we've got assigned three low-income and very low-income projects off of Sisoon Valley Road. I'm sorry. Based on our situation and the description of the problems is simply inappropriate. The other thing that's very concerning is we have a problem in the Cordelia area where Red Top Road, a very, very key road, which handles a lot of school traffic, is not yet widened. And you've got a problem with the develop, excuse me, the developer. They've been given an extension instead of being held to the terms of the contract to complete the widening. Now supposedly the new extension, but it's the end of this year, but they've been released essentially. And if, if the city could just keep on allowing an extension, and all we see is housing and no relief on our traffic problems. You've got, excuse me, it was not displayed, but the rest of the property off of Red Top Road is designated for housing. There are some of those parcels that are differently zoned. And I'm sorry.
Nora, you have 30 seconds.
We'd like to see our Red Top Road widened as it was supposed to be years ago. We've suffered for over 20 years with this problem. It's time to get that done. Please don't give a reward for not doing what you're supposed to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I don't have any other speaker cards.
Okay. And nobody online, I take it?
No.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearings and take questions from you all. Anybody have questions? Okay. How about we entertain a motion then to go ahead and approve? Oh, oh, you, hold on, hold the door. Councilwoman Panduro has a question.
So in reading the, the draft, which took me a few days, and in reading the public comments that we issued, I was, I was wondering, because it talked a lot about, and it was really interesting to read about the, oh my God, I'm losing my train of thought here. One second. The SOI, so the Source of Income Discrimination. And so it was really interesting to read about those numbers and that, you know, and just like that, obviously it does happen everywhere. And so I know one of the, the ways to kind of maybe not, maybe not to, well, I guess to approach it was, would be to add, be able to add some metric, a metric to be able to maybe track when this is happening. Is it decreasing in education around? So that it doesn't happen as often, because it was really astounding to see those numbers. And I know that we can't, like I said, it does happen everywhere, but it would be great to be able to track how it's happening or where and if it, if it decreases and what we're doing to kind of, to counter those, to counter what's, what's going on out there.
Yeah. In response to some of the comments from, from HCD, we added a number of metrics to measure performance. I'll be honest, so many, you know, it took you a number of days. I don't remember if that was one of them. But we, we got direction from HCD as to which, which programs that we needed to add metrics to, and so we added metrics to that. SOI may have been one of them, I don't recall. But we did follow their direction as to which programs required the metrics.
Okay. And then one other question I had on here. Enter Programs, Action 1.2, Inclusionary Housing. There was no definition for inclusionary housing. So I was just wondering if you could just share what that means so that we can all understand what inclusionary, inclusionary housing is?
Sure. And I think we're going to have further discussion on that topic coming up. But in general, you know, there could be a range of definitions. But it's some sort of a program that ensures that as new housing is built, there is a source for funding for, either a source of funding or a dedication of a certain number of units set aside for housing. So right now, as new development occurs, there's really no obligation on the part of any, most of our developers to ensure that we're providing for affordable housing. Inclusionary housing is some form of requirement that they contribute to that.
And then last question. I was reading about the farmworker housing. And I appreciate that we understand that there is a need for that because we are so close to Napa and we do have ag land in our, in our backyard. And I wanted to know what would be the difference between farmworker housing and low-income housing? Because I know in some instances it was like together, but I want to understand like the difference between the two. What would be the definition of the differences?
Yeah, sure. So the state takes a special look at, at farmworkers and their needs. And there's different types of housing that can be provided for farmworkers, particularly within our agricultural zones. And so one of the key differences is, you know, it could be size of the units, the number of units, but that they're typically within either a resident, I'm sorry, not a residential zone, an agricultural zone where we typically otherwise do not allow housing. Usually our agricultural zones set aside for some form of agriculture only. So it results, those policies or requirements would result in us looking at ways to allow housing specifically for farmworkers in our agricultural zones or any other zones that allow what we call extensive agriculture. If you read the document, you may have seen that. What you'll find is that we have very few places in the city that are zoned for agriculture, primarily along Cordelia Road over near Nelson Hill in District 1. There's a small area. And so really, it's going to focus on that area.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Councilwoman Williams?
I live in the Cordelia, Green Valley area, District 1. And I will tell you that I am extremely sensitive to traffic. That's the nicest way I could say it. And so I had, there were two things that I noted in the presentation. One was, in one of the powerpoints, there was a mention of constraints was in consideration, government and non-government constraints. Does that mean non-government constraints? Could that mean infrastructure?
Yeah. Allison, maybe you can address that question.
Yes, we did consider the infrastructure need. And I think we, we did, while, while it's not a constraint that is addressed specifically in that, that chapter, we did include some language to address the need for more transit options in one of the actions. Just give me a minute to take a look. Action 2.5, Citywide Density, Zoning and Circulation. So we include language that states, in concert with this effort, coordinate with transit providers to develop policies that increase transportation, mobility choices, and transit efficiency in areas with fewer, with fewer options that include Cordelia. And then, as I stated earlier as well, transportation and circulation and congestion is definitely something that we'll be looking at as part of the transportation element update as part of the comprehensive general plan.
So I appreciate that transit is of consideration. I love transit and I don't think we utilize it enough. But I think what I'm thinking of is the actual, something more assertive surrounding the actual infrastructure. Is there anything in this plan that considers, you know, outside of transit, increase of transit or what have you, the actual numbers of cars that are going up and down the street?
Yeah. So the housing element itself does not get into that issue. When it looks at constraints, it's really looking at what are the constraints to actually delivering housing affordability? But it's not looking at the other issues like transit. I think it was mentioned both by myself as well as by Allison, that the housing element, although we update it every eight years sort of all by itself, it is a part of, it lives as a part of the larger general plan. And so it works in conjunction with the other elements of our general plan. And although we're required by state law to update the housing element right now, we are at the same time working on an update to the general plan, which will be informed by the, the things that are called out in the housing element. And so what we'll do is we will look at what does the housing element call for? And then when we're updating the general plan, we will look at what are the infrastructure needs to serve that? And then we'll look as a part of that general plan update, what are our means for actually providing that infrastructure? So although it doesn't happen in the housing element itself, it happens as it works in conjunction with the other elements of the general plan.
Got it. So if I understand correctly, so this is only an inventory of available lots and spaces that would accommodate affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay. And then this is due in the next, did I read 90 days?
So the official deadline was, was January 31st. So as soon as you adopt it, we will send it off to HCD and they have 60 days to review it and then come back and tell us if what gets adopted by the city meets the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I have one question. And this has to do with constraints as well. And this is about the, the sewer and how there will be some deficiencies in the future in areas, different areas of Fairfield. Colleagues, this is page 176 I'm looking at. And they're talking about, we're going to need improvements that are going to cost about $50,000.
about $15 million. I know that the sewer district knows about this, and we all sit, most of us on the, well, we all sit on the sewer district. And so when you put this in here, did you have any other specific talks with the sewer district or just take this from the plan they had?
Yeah. That's taken from the plan they have and some additional work that our Public Works Department has been doing evaluating our sewer conditions.
Okay, good, yeah. I can see where there's some in older Fairfield and then, of course, our plant that we need, our pump plant we need to do in the long run, well, hopefully in the shorter run. But anyway, thank you. Nothing else then? I'm going to go ahead and thank you for the presentation. It was great. And I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve then Resolution 2023-19. So move from Councilwoman Panduro.
Second.
Second, from my councilman next to me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Oh, all right. It is unanimous, a yes. And before we close, I, I decided that when we're closing in the name of somebody, that I would like very much for one of our council members to say a little bit about Maureen, and you did earlier. Councilwoman Patrice, do you have anything that you wanted to say or anybody else about Maureen? We all knew her, of course.
Yeah. I, I'm so happy and pleased that City of Fairfield is doing this honor, this memorial of lights on behalf of Maureen Bates. I found out during Mayor Price's funeral that she had passed, and I didn't know. And so I really thought it was important to mark this amazing moment of this wonderful woman that has inspired so many. I, many of us spoke to the newspaper, so the newspaper reported out this long list of people that were speaking on her behalf, and, and I did too. And I just got this onslaught of, of calls and texts and emails, and I just knew that we needed to, to mark the moment, that this remarkable woman left this planet. So I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there anybody else? Thank you, Councilwoman Vaccaro.
Yeah, just real quick, you know, I, I actually had the honor and privilege to work with Maureen for a lot of years, you know? When she was in the county, I ran the, you know, county court schools for years. And every time we had any type of an event there, whether it was a graduation or, you know, a mid-year graduation or, or anything really, I would ensure to contact Maureen, or she would get mad at me if she'd call me and tell me. But she would always be there, and the kids all loved her. So, yeah, she, she will definitely be missed, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Councilwoman Carr. Did you have something to say about Maureen? Ms. Maureen?
I wish I knew her better, and I wish I had something to say. She sounds like a wonderful person.
She is. Anybody else? Well, thank you. Then we're going to go ahead and close now. It's 7:58, and we have no other business right now, except for we are going back into closed session, and our next meeting's on February 21st, 2023. Thank you all.